Well, Sandy now.
Sandy.
She said she might bring down here, so I was told Shelby that, of course, at school and she's not now.
And it's time to start, isn't it?
Well, get the best start. Special call meeting. On purpose of meeting, the issue is a new ordinance. And I think those ladies in the office have some good questions for us. I'm not sure they'll answer them, but we'll try to entertain all the questions. First one here, two days to cutoff. I'm not sure which way you want to go.
I think part of the issue of that is, on the rental side, the housing authority had indicated, because we've been telling people, the renters, that, you know, the cutoff date's going to change, they've indicated they cannot, they don't need their check until the 15th. So when the lead comes, they're automatically shut off. And, you know, having two dates, fair or equitable for everybody.
What's the current cutoff date?
Twenty-fourth.
Are you talking about people that are getting like social security and stuff? That's... Amy, and you don't possibly...
Yeah, like some of them, SSI, maybe.
What's with the social security?
They don't need to the 15th. You know, social security, SSI.
Well, there's a difference. Social Security, like you and I were saying, and then there's SSI, which is cut off a different fund.
Just say, I mean, they have these checks that are strung out all through the month because like...
Do they know what kind of check you're getting?
Yeah, because if you're in a dis... Some people on disability check get it the second Wednesday.
Yeah.
There's all kinds of ways on these checks.
What would be the pleasure of, you know, the group, how would they want, what do you recommend to solve that?
I mean, normally we read meters on around the 15th of every month, so I can see bill being due by the 15th and shut off on the 16th.
Or how about...
Or at least do a 10-day grace period. You know, bill due on the 10th, you know, and you add on the 11th, and shut off on the 20th. But then you're not...
What are we currently doing?
Shut off on the 24th.
What?
On the 24th.
And they read the, they read the meters when?
Fifteenth.
Question, you was talking about the people who got their check on the 15th, are their bill, are they always paying their bill late?
Yes.
Seriously. I've got the hiccups y'all haven't had in two days now, trying to get over it, so please don't, if I make funny sounds, it's not because of y'all. But that's not again, I know, I know that's bad and everything, but they have to, you know, they have to function for that. We can't, we can't give everything to fit everybody.
Now Shelby had 800 or something on the penalty list this time. So if we sent people out 600 to turn off that day, he don't have...
We had 800 people with late chart, late bills?
Yes, 836 customers, 100 with late charges.
On a normal, a normal shut off month, there's about 30 or 35. It takes two guys, a full day, because as soon as we turn them off, then guess what? Ten minutes later, they're here and pay it. Then we gotta go back and turn it back on.
What was the reason, I mean, this month?
Exactly, because I have a year of a month.
There's, there's any other people a month that don't pay their bill on time?
I mean, normally...
Is it regularly?
Yes.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting, I mean, that's new information.
Dang.
On a 10% charge, you're getting, actually, that's a little bit to our benefit.
And you've got some that will never come in to the 23rd to pay it.
But I always thought, I thought...
But you've got some that just don't have the money, and when they get it, they come in to pay it.
Well, what would we say, I'm not sure if we want to, but put the tenant on all, all of the 24th, would that be more equitable?
That's what it is, that's what it is.
I know, we stay like we are now, would that be better?
So on the 24th, how many do you usually shut off? Between 30 and 35?
So I'm like 100...
The only thing, the other night, when all the landlords were here...
Yeah, we'd have to reinforce, no, that's different.
Agreement, yeah. Do you know about 800?
If it's not feasible for the vampire, we can't continue with it.
How many, I mean, I was working on going through all of my lease agreements, I'm in, they're sorted by alphabet, what's name. So as of right now, I'm through to the letter L, and I have 264 tenants, renters. So I don't know how many of those exactly have not paid their bill.
Let me, let me ask you this, on the 30 to 35, how many of theirs turned back on, on average?
Seventy-five, eighty percent?
Yeah.
We're turning back on same day?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be 20, 21 to 25, on average. So we're gonna have about 10 a month that actually water's gonna stay cut off. And around 25, that will have their water turned back on and paid $100 deposit every month. I think, now, this is just my opinion, if we're just looking at 10 people, we've got to, we need to try to accommodate the...
Everybody else.
Everybody else if we can, so I, I mean, my personal opinion, as far as that goes, is that we're gonna have to set that cutoff date out either the 15th or the 20th, or 16th to the 20th. That's still not four days. Four days could mean a lot of water, but...
That's it, don't give vampire runners two cutoff dates, right Larry?
No, give everybody.
Unless you change the cutoff date to the same for everybody.
Make everybody the 20th.
Maybe make the 20th.
That's a whole lot easier for the office staff to keep up with renter versus non-renter.
But they want to increase how many you're gonna be cutting off on the 20th?
It still will increase some, probably, because Amy said it pays on the 23rd.
And some of them, they just know they have until, like, you know, they may get paid on the 10th, but, I mean, they're already getting the penalty.
They're gonna, they're gonna...
So they're just gonna wait two more weeks and pay, wait till they're very last minute, yeah.
So once we, once we move that cutoff date, say, to the 20th, then we've got the part of that group that will come on in and pay.
Yeah.
We're thinking, yes.
Okay.
Another question, is it, say we move it to the 20th, and there's 35 now that you have to shut off, and it goes to say 50, just throwing that out there, will all 50 have to pay a reconnect fee, get an apology?
They get shut off, yes. First time, first offense is $50, second offense is $100.
And a lot of times Shelby will call people, or we will call them, or something, just say, hey, heads up, cutoff date. Now, if we change the date to the 20th, we'll probably call all of them, just to say, if this is in place now, you're all gonna have to get that bill.
I have no problem changing it to 20th, I've got to be all right.
What we have done in the past, if somebody gets cut off, if they will agree to go on auto pay, we'll waive the $50s national. That, that way, we know we're getting the money.
From there, from now on?
From now on.
I went on auto pay?
I went on auto pay.
Me too.
I always forget it, I had to pay two months, did a warrant, so...
I usually carry it with me to the meeting and then carry it home.
Have you ever talked to the people that come in regularly, where if you, like, would there be a day you could move it down the line that would help them in some way, shape, or form?
They'd want too much down, bro.
Yeah, oh, I know. I, I just wondered, because from, from what you all were talking about, and like you said, people that are on fixed incomes, it's the day, I think everybody's, everybody's different on the day. Like, it's literally like either your last name, I think, you get it on a certain day, and, and it, yeah, this is because it's not like social security hits, everybody that's on social security gets it the same day. I think it's broken, I think it's broken down by like your last name, or when you were born, or something.
Much to much.
But yeah, I just wondered if there was a, a better day.
Is there anything, I can't remember the other night, what we said, why they were moved, one day after another, for less than a month. What was the rationale?
Because they went late with renters, that's what we're having a problem with.
I think that'd be a problem.
The renters, the renters were getting shut off quicker because that way, they couldn't run their water, water bill up.
So the landlords, if they were stuck with that bill, they weren't stuck with as much of a bill?
I see what we're doing to the landlord, but create another little month to here.
Yeah, I think by increasing the deposit, we're gonna cut that out, a lot of that out.
And we do, we do give people leniency, if they call, say, I can't pay it, you know, on cutoff date, can you give it to Friday? We say, yes. But now with, with what Paul told the gentleman was, we would be responsible for that portion, we're not gonna have...
If we agreed to.
We're not gonna have no leniency.
You gotta have some, though, there's certain people you can't help.
Well, okay, but here's the problem, Kevin, somebody, of course, is based on the renter side of it, they call, say they can't pay it. So we're gonna be responsible from, from the cutoff date, which is the 11th, or the 20th, or 24th, till, and if they get shut off, that the landlord's not gonna be responsible, correct? So when they call, I've got to send somebody up and get a reading on the meter, to know how much the city's gotta eat, versus where they stop at the landlord. That's just an extra trip. And there won't be 1, 5, 10, 15, there are gonna be 40, 50, 60. So the leniency that we're gonna have, on my behalf, is gonna be zero.
We still have one more week left until shut offs, which we don't shut off on Friday just because of the weekend, we don't want them to go without water for the weekend. But we still have one week left, and I probably already have five to 10 arrangements, and that's gonna more than likely double or triple next week.
And now, if the cutoff date gets changed to a...
The 20th.
The 20th, and a 20th falls on a Friday...
Are we gonna shut off?
Are we gonna shut off?
What do you doubt because of 24th?
Because we don't now because of the weekend.
Because a lot of people don't get home from work and find out that they don't have water until we've already closed, you know?
I'd have to think we'd have to keep that same, you know, falls, the 20th falls on a Friday, what would that happen, twice a month, twice a year, maybe?
As I'm scrolling through your...
I'm playing devil's advocate here, landlord said cutoff date's 20th, while they're gonna be billed for two extra days if they didn't pay the bill.
Yeah.
If there's just a little language change in that ordinance that you passed, you know, cutoff date is gonna be on the 20th, unless it falls on a Friday, does it fall on Monday?
We're flouting up ground here, that really is all new, we, we just don't know, have an answer, I'm not sure we can make an answer today. We may have to have kind of another call meeting to try to cut off an answer to this. Cause we might have a knee-jerk reaction to the question, and then give, change something, it may not be the thing we really want to do. So we're gonna have to think about this a little while.
And two, whenever you all had talked about, we already had the ordinance in place, so we had to amend the ordinance we had, instead of amending to that other ordinance. We had an ordinance about the cutoffs and the deposits and all that, so you have to have first and second reading on that to change it.
Well, what I would recommend, though, if we got all this confusion, let's put these ordinance, enactment of this ordinance...
That's what I said about...
Table that for a while, till we can get this worked out.
I don't care to amend it, to say that if it cuts off on a Friday, we adjust it and goes to a Monday.
Well, I was saying, there's other questions they got, too, and I'm not sure we can answer them all today.
I'm, I'm with you, Charles.
I know, we, they go ahead through the first reading, ordinance change, for the deposit.
They do the first reading on it, the water ordinance to change to the 20th.
The deposit was an ordinance on the southern. We can have first reading on the ordinance, the water deposit change, and then what else was it?
And it's on that.
We don't know the cutoff date yet, so we don't get any confirmation there.
Yeah, we can, we can, and then we...
You can still have...
That's the way the motion was made, in two different parts, wasn't it?
Yeah, if we wanna do the deposit, we can do that.
Yeah, we can do that, that'll, that automatically helps some.
Okay.
So if we do that.
But until, let's wait on the cutoff date, we'll have to, I think we'll have to wait on that.
Yeah, I think that we need to look at...
If we want to move on, that motion's proven.
I'll second, I'll second what you're saying, Charles.
We're approving the deposit, right?
Just the deposit.
Just, just for clarity, what was the old deposit, what's the new deposit?
The old deposit was $150. The new one's $250.
For residential.
No, I thought it was for rental.
Residential rentals.
Oh, sorry.
But another issue that I seen was, we have residential renters who are gonna start paying $250. But if beefs was starting up tomorrow, I would say, okay, your deposit's 300, when they use so much more water than Django up St. Street.
Let's get, let's get this positive here, ordinance passed, while we start trying to amend it. But we, we have two things going here.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't work on it, did we even discuss the commercial that...
No, it wasn't brought up.
I think it's a thing that's discussed.
It wasn't brought up.
We don't want to deal with it today.
There was a commercial guy here, we did talk about it, but nothing to...
He took it out of the ordinance, the order here. So all in favor of the reading of the deposit?
Yes.
Can you vote? That motion's passed, so I would say let's table the water cutoff date, so we can have some more information, clarity, because we, I'm not sure about even changing it anymore.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's where the, yeah, I can say that, because we're gonna get into an issue here where that we're making it, I mean, I understand we're trying to help, but we've got to help everybody, I mean, or make it fair, equitable for everybody. And I'm not sure that, that right now, we, we can do that.
Well, we also know with the girls and Larry's death, I mean, the way it's set up right now, they're gonna be running up and down the street, they're gonna be pulling their hair out because of bills.
And if we pass an order the other night, to be the 11th?
No.
The cutoff was gonna be the 10th.
The first reading was this.
No, the ordinance on the cutoff, it's gonna be first or second reading.
It's actually on my, it's on that first, the cutoff, is actually on your deposit ordinance. All that's together.
I don't get it.
Yeah.
I thought that two separate ones.
What y'all passed the other day, I don't know, was the landlord being responsible after the 11th.
Do you have a copy of that?
I'm betting the charge on unpaid bills after the 11th of the month.
So the other night, you discussed some numbers, what is, what is the issue that you're dealing with here, what is that costing you annually?
I think last year was $5,000.
It's averaged six over the past five years, I think is what I figured out. I think it was 36,000 over the last five years, or something like that.
Yeah, and it has gotten a little bit better due to the fact that before, we changed it, we used to take off to the second or third of the month after. Now, we did push it up to 20, you know, the 24th, but it used to be the next one.
That's kinda following Super Bowl cities, on the cutoff.
Well, the reason, the reason I bring it up, and it's just my way of thinking, is you have to start thinking about how much extra work you've gotta do, pulling guys off to do this, do that, and how, how quickly does it eat into the $5,000 or $6,000?
Well, in the middle of summer, if we're having concerts, there's no way we can do everything.
A lot of people, a lot of the guys are kind of angry there.
Yeah, so I say, they'd be, we'd be working everybody dead.
Well, I'm not sure, you, the other three of y'all, but I'm not sure about that, how what to do with that paragraph. But we already, what, passed one reading of it, the other night?
No, the first, this is the first reading.
Okay, so it hadn't been, we didn't vote on it the other night?
Oh, okay.
Why didn't we vote on it the other night?
I thought we did the first reading, too. We just voted on what we're gonna do.
That was to correct it, but we didn't vote on it as a, as an ordinance, did we? We just voted on it as a suggestion.
Like, what you all were talking about doing was, like, adding it into that ordinance, but we couldn't add it into that ordinance, because it already stood as its own ordinance.
Yeah, what we passed was the landlord being responsible...
Right.
After the 11th. So that had to be amended, too, if the date's changed.
Well, that's what's gonna be, we got so many things going here, I'm not sure which date's up.
And Larry, wasn't that the second reading on that?
That was the second reading.
So that one was passed.
That was passed, but the, the date is invalid, because that ordinance is on...
It's on this different ordinance.
Yes. So it, it's, it stands as of the landlord is responsible.
But it doesn't have a date.
The date has gotta go back to the 24th, because if the ordinance is standing on hold.
Yeah, and I don't like that, going back to the 24th, when we told everyone...
Did we go number 11?
The 11th, yeah.
But if we made it to 20th, we're kinda splitting the difference there.
I just, I'm kinda like a loss, but outcomes agree in agreement of the group.
Well, I don't, I don't think we're gonna...
I'm with you, I think we need to take a little...
Just wait on it, yeah.
Do you have any numbers, figures, data, or anything for us?
I need to probably have it by middle of the...
And I don't wanna put more work on you to gather that data.
I'm trying to get through all my lease agreements right now.
Yeah.
And figure out who's a tenant in the computer and who's not, so I can run a report that way. But that'll show us how many are actually late.
Right. That's what I was gonna ask, so you're looking at tenants, of the 200, you said you're at, of the Ls.
Yeah.
Are those people late, or...
No, that's one thing, I'm, like, I can't technically run a report...
Until you're putting tenants out.
Like, even if we do two different cutoff dates, I'll have my penalty register, and then I'll have my list of tenants, and I'm gonna have to go through my list of tenants and see if they're on that.
Okay.
Like, it doesn't give me two separate ones.
We can table this, can't we, until we get more information?
Well, we might agree to remain at the 24th, till we can come up with a better arrangement.
What if we split differences, make it 17th?
Because we did say the other night, that...
How would that affect it?
It wasn't becoming effective until the ordinance was passed.
17th is gonna be right, too, because we're reading the 15th, we're gonna re-reads on the 16th, 17th.
That's reading, yeah, we are reading days.
Well, like I said, until we get more clarity, might be, you just have to take that in quote, till we get this settled.
So the 20th would be more reasonable, you're thinking?
I think don't change it, because that's what we...
Well, I wasn't, I was just thinking, trying to figure out what the best type to change it might be, too.
I don't think we know yet.
I don't think we, I don't think we're coming in.
I think leave it as it is, because that's what we relay to everyone here, that until the ordinance was passed, right? Is that, I mean, the...
It's, it's still the 20th.
It's still the 20th right now.
Exactly, until we pass the ordinance saying it's the 11th, or the whatever. And that's what we tell the folks.
Has anybody hooked up with the 250 yet? Had to pay the 250.
I talked to someone on the phone yesterday, asking what the deposit was, and I told him it was 250.
Which is, which is not, it's not...
He has some, he has second reading. He didn't have second reading.
Well, this was the second reading, though, wasn't it?
So he said it was gonna be a few weeks before he came in, so...
No, this is first reading. We can deal with the deposit side of this, can't we, today?
Yeah, we did.
But you gotta have a second reading.
Now, I mean, it's gotta be a second reading, but...
So we can either do, have another special call meeting in order to figure out what we're gonna do on the shut offs, to get the first reading for that, and have a second reading for the deposits, and then next month's reading you would have?
The only thing we've dealt with today is the first reading on the deposit.
Right.
And that's it.
And we need to know more information on what's a vampire, and the logistics, we need some logistics ideas about how...
And I was thinking that the other night, that was something that we conveyed in that meeting Monday night, is that we still had to work on the logistics side of some of this.
Can I ask a question?
I don't think so.
This is, I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this question. But when you get social security now, isn't it required you have to have a bank account to have direct deposit?
Yes.
So can we not make it mandatory that you have to have direct, you have to have mandatory?
They can also get it on the card.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
You also can get it on their card.
Yeah, my cousin, I was his guardian, and he had a debit.
So can they not have to be, have to be able to furnish a card, or a bank account?
We don't run cards.
Where it makes it automatic?
We do hard, we don't keep it.
Then the other side of that is, on so many of them, they've got a payee that actually is the one that handles it. It depends on whether you're on, it depends on what type of social security you're on. If you're on the type of disability, more than likely, you have a payee that handles your money. So you not only gotta chase those folks with, like that, but you gotta figure out who their payee is.
I figured that's telling down the road, that we're gonna want to have, we're gonna take debit cards, we're gonna have to probably get to that point, and then get a, say, if you don't do a debit card, you have to direct pay, so why couldn't it cut coming?
Yeah, we take debit card, debit and credit cards now, but we just can't save them.
You can't do it.
We can't draw them any from, yeah.
You can't do it for a hundred...
They gotta be there physically every, every month.
Yes, if they are gonna take a card, it has to be, they have to come down here.
But why can't they be drawing every month off a credit card? What, what is the reasoning?
Well, the issue with it is, is like, if you have an account on a website that takes money out, like a subscription, you've got an account, they're just running a card for a single...
But this is an account.
I mean, yes, they're a water account, and we link a bank account with them, so I mean, if they have a debit card, they're gonna have a bank account. If they bring me avoided check, it comes out of that bank account that is linked to their debit.
My saying on the debit cards and credit cards is, once you put that in your database, and you, you're subject to have a database hack.
But that's, that's on anything, that's your bank or anywhere else, too.
So, I mean...
Let's look at that option a little bit more, make that available to them, and stress it highly, but we need, we need to have a, we're just gonna say, if we don't do anything, we're gonna stay the 24th right now.
Correct.
That's what we need to do, then we'll probably facilitate to come back, say, let's get the reload, and re, more ammunition, and come back.
Do you have any more questions?
How many total customers you have?
1,600.
I think I said we have about 1,700 water bills a month.
And how many in Berlin?
836.
Half the people in Beaverton are late on their water bills?
We have people that you know...
I was like that, I'm not knocking it, that's why I put my direct deposit.
Yeah, and, and they will put a check in the night drop, the morning of cutoffs, every single month.
I used, I used to, I, I used to pay the 10% penalty every day, just on, because that's just the way my money happened to come in. I mean, 10% is a lot better than the cutoff. So I paid the 10%.
So when you all take cards, do you have to, what do you deal with, card fees, is that additional? What do you all eat it?
No, we don't.
I can't be bothered with it.
I just know because T-Mobile is fixing to make, they, they give you a $5, they're gonna give you a $5 discount if you do automatic pay, but they're fixing to make it, it's gotta be a bank account, because they're trying to get away from credit card fees.
Even debit cards are getting more, they won't charge 3%.
And we charge 2.75 to run a debit card.
When I was in Florida, everywhere I went in, they said, can you pay cash? Yeah, I said, will you say 5%, 3%?
Oh, yeah.
It was, okay, cash is a good thing, I'm good.
So as of right now, we've dealt with the deposit, which is what we, one of the things that we really needed to do, and the other one, we're gonna table until we have the further information.
Well, it's still gonna help the rental people and the person that's doing the renting, so that's gonna help them. the renting, so that's going to help. It may not be perfect, but, like I said, we're going to have to have more information, we're going to have to figure it out better.
And I was under the impression that Monday night, that we made that statement, that we would have to look at some of this further, and I, I, I may have been wrong, I may not have been listening good enough. But the only thing I understood that we put in stone, or, and I'm not, wasn't sure that it was even in stone Monday night, was the fact that the deposit, I guess I wouldn't, I know that they wanted that cutoff date to the minute, if they could get it, but we were under, when we talked to you, and the impression that I had in the meeting was that we were just going to have to discuss this cutoff a little bit further.
I didn't know there was going to be any amendments to that ordinance. You know, it, it was discussed in the first meeting, the first passage was, what was the pay, the landlord was responsible.
Well, that call came about because of the uproar of the landlords, and misinformation they had, about them being responsible for the whole bill. And that's the only way we got them to calm down, was to compromise on that.
Well, probably we should have passed anything we should have taken down, and, because that, a lot of the, the girls come up with this question, well, how are you going to do this? Do you have a manpower, like, I didn't think of it, you know?
At first, we didn't even know if we could separate the renters from the homeowners, but we figured out a way to do that, so.
Now, until we get some, a little better guideline, I think we're going to, yeah, come back to, we bound that, that's another special call meeting, okay?
We've already, we've already helped.
Well, we need to have a special call meeting fairly soon, for the second reading of 250.
But remember, the cutoff dates are on the same ordinance.
I know, but.
So can, so we'll have to change it again?
We'll have to, but the quicker we get the 250 established, the quicker helps us on people leaving them, and also on what the landlord's going to pay.
So if you need to retype it, we need to go out and do another first reading again?
No, this, you already done first reading.
Because we got to retype it up, though.
Yes.
So, so is this a?
And that happens between the first and second reading.
Is this a new ordinance that you just passed?
This is just amended the ordinance of the deposit.
Amendment, okay.
So it's amended.
The only thing we changed was the deposit, that's the only thing we changed.
But that's the first reading of that.
I don't want to make sure we didn't back ourselves in the corner on that. And then what it, if y'all can help come up with the help, excuse me, you guys will do it, you care in the front line. I, what I say, and what I recommend, may not be the best thing.
No, not me, neither.
So Larry, you're going to give the ladies?
Oh, they got to pay.
Well, I mean, you know, it's like, it's like when something goes on out there on the, on the road, we don't hear about it unless Larry tells us about it. And his men may tell him about it, he comes and tells us about it. So if you have something, you need to go tell Larry, or y'all need to contact us individually and, and make sure we know. Because we don't, we're not here every day, we don't know.
One of the issues, like, y'all were all discussing it at the meeting, and then said, okay, this is what we can do, but my issue was, you didn't check with the office staff.
Well, it sounded easy to do, and it really was.
Yeah, it's not, it's, you can't just.
Well, you know what, I just like to say, I'll go, we had to appease some people, you know, that's what happened.
Yeah.
So if we, if it's worth it handling, kind of the better solution, what we're going to leave from you. Because what I say, may not work.
I'm, I'm believing that if we change, if we can move that cutoff date to as close as we can, and still be within, to where we're not going to be, you, you know what we deal with every month. And if we can move that cutoff date, any, any way we can move it closer to that.
So are you, are you talking about everybody's cutoff date?
Everyone's cutoff.
So you're, the, the, the two cutoff days is out?
That's a nightmare.
Yeah, I, I figured. Honestly, I thought that tonight, I was like, wow, that's going to be a night.
Well, I, I, I wasn't.
Well, I think you brought up, was that going to have a vampire do it? And I'm thinking, really, it'll be 30 or 40, like always, and then they pulled it up for, it was 800 or something like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm like you, when you told me 800, I was like in shock.
None of us expected that information.
Man, my thing, my thing was, is not, or thinking anyway, if, we got to look at the legality of, of, uh, it's got to be equitable for everybody, it's got to be, it's got to be equitable, and, and, the word that I'm looking for escapes me, but.
By the way, anybody that needs help on their water bill, if they go to Audubon area, South Baverdown, they, $200 to $400, just tell them, they'll do it.
Well, and that was another issue that we have, like, we, Audubon will send us a paper saying, hey, I'm sending $300 on so and so's water bill, well, that may be two or three months.
Before we get it.
Before we get it, so they're already way over their credit, if they don't come in and just make a payment, you know, just to pay something on it, so they'll have it after their full Audubon payment is made. But are we going to eat that, or is the city going to eat that, because we accepted arrangements from Audubon to pay $300 on somebody's water bill? And we couldn't shut them off, because we had arrangements from Audubon that they were paying.
Well, that's one of those things that we just can't really uncover everything, we may be, we have to eat it.
I never thought about that yesterday, I, I was talking to a, a lady from Audubon at the Health Coalition meeting, and she was like, we've got all this money, we've got to spend. But I didn't, I didn't know how the payouts went, if the payouts don't go that fast, then.
Well, anything, anything that's got to do with the government is going to be slow.
Yeah.
That's what we, all we can do today, so, Larry, can you oversee this next step of trying to find some actual way to handle this?
We will discuss it. We'll take, uh, we'll, we'll take ideas to look at, I mean, we've got to look at.
Give us more than one if you can.
Well, you all have a cutoff date coming up, don't you, pretty soon?
Yeah, I mean, that, that.
Can you not look at, can you not look at today, and tomorrow, and the next day, and